Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, November 29th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselors Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak. Counsel Newton. Counselor Kobsinski.
Here.
Counselor Monague.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Next on tonight's agenda is a special presentation, lifesaving award. Chief Harden is your guest or chief? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on and bring that back. We have a public hearing, three of them, I believe. Albany Development Code Amendments DC dash zero one, amendments dash zero three dash two three, by Ann Catlin, pages three through forty-nine in your packet. The applicant, I should submit to read this whole thing. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding amendments to the Albany Development Code as specified in the planning file DC dash zero three dash two three. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department. I call to order this legislative public hearings at six zero, six oh one PM. If you wish to testify, there are two ways, where there were two options available, which were described in the council agenda and in the notice materials. At this time, I call on a reading of the meeting procedures by the Comprehensive Planning Manager, Ann Catlin.
Thank you, Mayor. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards and review criteria in the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
Thank you very much, Ann. At this time, I call on staff for a staff report from project planner Liz Olstead.
I'm working to get our presentation up. Sorry, our computer decided to restart back there.
Not a problem.
But if you don't know Liz, Liz is with the, Liz, do you want to introduce? She's our, one of our planners, and she's working with me and the rest of the planners, and happy to have her tonight.
Good to meet you. It's almost up.
No, sorry. Just, you can go ahead and mention.
Okay. So we're here tonight for ADC amendments for planning file DC oh three twenty-three. These amendments are minor clarifications, corrections, and revisions to various articles of Albany Development Code. So as you see in your packet, there's a lot of little amendments that we're doing with this project. I'm just going to highlight some of the ones that may warrant a little bit of explanation or a little more clarification if needed. So we'll start with Article One, Administration and Procedures. So in this article, we have changed the process for temporary dwellings to a type-one special use permit with a hundred-foot public notice area. So this is for temporary hardship dwellings and onsite residences for when somebody wants to build a house on their property and needs a place to live while they're doing that. The next one is clarifying activities that did not require a land use application. This includes increasing the wall height from eleven feet to twelve feet for residential accessory buildings, which are exempt from land use review. And this is, some of these include not requiring a land use review to restripe a parking lot and just aligning with building code. So in Article Three, we propose to decrease the required setback for detached accessory structures, two hundred square feet or less, from three feet to two feet. Part of the reasoning for this was building code no longer requires fire separation between property lines and accessory structures that don't require a permit. So we decided to decrease to two feet to still give room for maintenance and a little area around the structure to provide, sorry, I guess, maintenance to do anything you need to, as well as drainage. The next thing in Article Three is we propose to simplify parking standards in front yard areas to clarify where vehicles, RVs, and boats can be parked. In Article Nine, a lot of the Article Nine updates were in response to the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules, adjustments related to large parking lots. The first one is for trees. The current code says the tree, the tree is calculated at fifteen years from planting. We wanted to add at twenty years old to clarify how tree canopy is calculated. And this next one is setting a minimum parking lot addition threshold of five thousand square feet to comply with the new climate-friendly area parking lot regulations. We did this because we wanted something meaningful, in addition to be meaningful and not be too onerous on the property owners when expanding their parking lots. The next one is for Article Ten. We propose to allow recreational vehicles as a permitted temporary dwelling. Right now, we only allow manufactured homes, but we wanted to allow recreational vehicles to provide an easier way to get temporary hardship dwellings, as well as an easier way to get them off the property when that hardship or onsite residence was done. We also put in regulations to tie the onsite temporary dwelling timeline to active building permits for construction of a primary residence, just as a way to kind of have a fixed timeline to have the onsite dwelling removed once the building was finished. So those were the highlights. The next is ADC criteria and findings. Staff feels the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable Comprehensive Plan statewide planning goals and policies. Goal one, citizen involvement. Goal two, land use planning. And goal ten, housing. And criteria two, the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable development code and base zone purpose statements. So we recommend approval for file DC oh three twenty-three. And the last slide is, sorry.
There's no slides, sorry. I can't get logged into this computer.
I'm a paper there.
I trust you.
So we did go through due process for the type-four legislative amendment. The Planning Commission made a recommendation, and then council's the final decision-maker. We did run public notice in the newspaper, put notice to DLCD and the counties, and no comments have been received to date.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any clarifying questions regarding this staff report? Counsel, Counsel Monague.
So on page eighteen of our packet, it states that we're changing decks greater than thirty inches and above, we're reducing the setback from five to three feet. Why are we doing that? That doesn't seem consistent with all the other changes.
Well, currently, those are not really a structure. They're just attached to a house. So the reason for doing that is because we've got other detached structures, such as a whole building that's, you know, an accessory building is allowed to be three feet away from a property line. So it's not the house, but it would be a deck that's part of a house. So it seemed that five feet or eight, you know, so.
So this makes it consistent with, like, it would be part of the house, right? If it was a building, it would, there's a three-foot setback, so it just makes it consistent with that? Is that what the thinking was?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. This is, this is in a different, sorry, apologies. If the deck is detached, just like a detached structure, then we would allow it to be three feet instead of five feet.
Oh, only.
I don't think it happens very often where somebody puts a deck in their yard that's separate from the house. So since we allow other buildings to be three feet away, we thought that it would make sense to allow this to be three feet away, sorry.
No, it makes sense to keep it consistent. I just didn't understand that piece of it. So thank you for explaining it. I'm good.
You know, the counselors have a question or comment? Do you have something? I would ask, I do have one. You said the temporary dwelling unit during the construction, is there a window on either side to give them a chance to get it installed, then start construction? And then, once the construction is done, give them a couple of weeks or a week to get it removed? Or is there any wiggle room there? Because if the house is done, occupies there, do they have to move that day? Or do they have a window they can set up movement and things like that?
Yeah, we've set it up so that it has to be removed when the building permit is finalized. You can get extensions, and our building department does definitely work with people. So although it says, once the building permit is filed, it has to be removed, I'm sure that they would work with people on that.
Yeah, because currently, the code says it's limited to one year, and what we're trying to do is just tie that duration to the building permit. So that could be longer than a year, I mean, depending on how long it takes for construction, so that we don't have to worry about extensions necessarily if building is still going on. So we're just making a little more specific to how it's actually used and that timeframe it takes to construct the new dwelling.
Counsel, any more clarifying questions, comments? Thank you. Oh, you got something? Okay, we will now be taking public testimony. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record, as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. Seventeen people. Hearing none. I will now call on those registered to speak, followed by those who did not register to speak. And present, no one is registered to speak. Would anyone in chambers like to speak to us this evening regarding this matter? Thank you. Does anyone, any member of the audience wish to speak about the proposed amendments? And if you do, would like, raise your hand and so, and if you are attending in person or virtually, to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Please provide your name and address on the sign, on the signing sheet. If you're a person, you can email it to the city's address on the document. On there. Does any staff member wish to respond? Nope, there's no response. Does any counsel have any questions for the staff? I declare this public hearing closed at six thirteen PM, November 29th. Does the City Council wish to discuss these amendments? Rickets. There's an ordinance for your consideration on page five of the council packet. Microphone, sir.
I move that we have the ordinance read a first time in title only.
About a second.
A second.
So moved.
Alex, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you don't need a motion. Have the ordinance read a first time in title only. We've been getting confused about that.
Okay. There's a recommended motion to consideration on page four. So will the city attorney please read the ordinance and the title only?
An ordinance amending ordinance number four 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 oh one, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and Development Code and adopting findings.
Would the counsel like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
Move to read the ordinance a second time by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
An ordinance amending ordinance number four 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 one, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending this Albany Comprehensive Plan and Development Code and adopting findings.
I move that the City Council adopt the ordinance to amend the development code as detailed in ordinance Exhibit A and further described in the findings and conclusions from the staff report provided in ordinance Exhibit B for planning file DC zero three two three. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report dated November seventeen, twenty twenty-three, and findings in support of the decision made by the City Council during deliberations on this matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. A legislative decision of the City Council may be appealed to Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than twenty-one days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of an amendment or new land regulation, land use regulation, the Director shall forward the Department of Land Conservation and Development as a copy of an adopted ordinance and findings. Thank you. So we good?
Yes, Mayor, if we could interrupt our public hearings to go back to Agenda Item Number Three.
I think that's a great idea, City Manager. So I'm going to pause the public hearings, we'll have a special presentation by Chief Marshall Harden.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'm going to try to get through this without coughing, so I apologize if I break out. Five weeks of coughing, so it's a thing. So can I invite retired Officer Ken Vanderhamm up here? He's gonna, he's responsible for this. And Mr. Hostler, come on up. And I'll have Ken give his own insights on this, but this is a lifesaving word that the police department is bestowing on Mr. Hostler. On February second of twenty twenty-three, he was involved in a minor collision here in Albany, and when he was interacting with the other driver, he quickly noticed that something was not right and that the driver might be suffering from a stroke. Standard for police to come out there, but he obviously trusted his instincts and knew something was wrong, and the other driver was indeed having a stroke. If it hadn't been for immediately getting the Albany Fire Department going and on scene, the patient was eventually transported to Portland, where they were able to get lifesaving measures in place, and he made a full recovery. If it hadn't been for your actions on that day, and you could have just written the guy off as being drunk or something like that, you trusted your instincts and got the fire department there, they were able to start that process. So we want to bestow on you the lifesaving word on behalf of the police department, and I'll let Ken say a few words as well, because he's the one who nominated you.
Nobody told me there isn't a speech.
Welcome to retirement.
In this circumstance, though, this was one where I was responding to a non-injury crash where the vehicles were off the roadway. So we respond and just kind of, we just drive there, we don't drive in emergency fashion. And it was critical that he reported to us that the driver might be having a stroke. And so I instantly on the radio asked for the medics, and the paramedics actually got there before I even got to the scene. So in this circumstance, it truly was a hundred percent his actions that really led to, and my understanding was that this guy recovered fully from the stroke. Albany Fire Department were on scene very quickly. They got him to the hospital, the hospital linked with Legacy Emanuel Hospital, and they had doctors via computer all talking, and then the helicopter came in and he was gone. Within forty-five minutes, he was in surgery up in Legacy Emanuel. So it was critical what Jacob's steps were to get that whole ball rolling, so.
Absolutely. Anyone take a couple pictures? If you want to get between, this is yours now.
Wonderful, thank you. Perfect, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Hostler. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing, Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan Amendments, Ann Catlin, on page fifty to fifty-eight in your packet. I declare this public hearing open at six nineteen PM. Does the staff have a report?
I just have a very short report and no presentation. As you probably are aware, we are required to have a citizen participation plan in order to receive federal funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We do have one of those plans, and we do need to make a few minor updates to the plan. One, so that we are a little more inclusive and engaging more people, especially those that are underserved. And we also want to ensure the plan outlines a process when we might want to apply for other funds besides CDBG funds, which is what we just did with the pro-housing grant. And we just need to have that process in our citizen participation plan. So that is essentially it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions before I move on?
I just thought it was fantastic. I love the changes, so I appreciate the extra work and effort on being more inclusive. So thank you.
Thank you. For those who wish to testify, options are described on the council agenda. I will now open those registered to speak. And at this time, is anyone registered to speak? No one is registered to speak, thank you. I will call, followed by anyone in the audience would like to write comments. I declare the public hearing closed at six twenty-one PM. Any counsel discussion?
My move, we approve a resolution amending Albany's citizen partisan participation plan adopted by resolution number six eight seven nine and required by the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is amending the Albany Municipal Code fifteen dot sixteen, system development charges. I declare the public hearing open at six twenty-one, six twenty-one PM. Does the staff have a report?
I do not have a formal report, just a couple of quick words. This, this public hearing tonight is the last step in the process of kind of codifying and adopting and enacting the storm drainage system development charge, which council adopted at our last council meeting on November eighth. So this, this step simply makes changes to the Albany Municipal Code to, to ensure that the SDC can be collected and administered. So it's, it's just a kind of a paperwork exercise that, that allows the collection and the administration of the SDC.
Thank you, I appreciate the report. No written materials were reported or submitted, none submitted. I now close the registered, I now call on those registered to speak. No one signed up to speak? Thank you very much. I declare the public hearing closed at six twenty-three PM. Counsel, do we have any discussion? How's the time? Thank you. There's an ordinance for your consideration on page sixty of your packet, Agenda packet. Would the counsel, the city attorney read the ordinance the first time in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title Fifteen to add new language for the implementation of citywide storm drainage system development charge.
Would a counsel like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Would a counsel like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Oh, I'll read it again. I have to read it. Yep. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title Fifteen to add new language for the implementation of a citywide storm drainage system development charge.
Would a counsel like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Make a motion. Go ahead. I make a motion, we adopt the ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title Fifteen to add new language for the implementation of a citywide storm drainage system development charge.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, thank you, counselors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, city attorney, city clerk. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. At present, Joe Orton sent a letter, email to the council this afternoon. No one signed up to speak virtually. Anyone in the council chambers, or we can check the list. Mr. Ray Hiltz, will you sign up to speak? We have three minutes.
I'm Ray Hiltz, live in Albany. There's, also wrote an article in his blog, and there was responses criticizing, especially one counselor. I want to correct something that was mentioned. Originally, when CARA was formed, I was on the original board, making decisions to give grants and loans to businesses on First and Second Avenue. They were dilapidated buildings. So anyway, I think the public misunderstands without going into detail about what CARA That's all I have to say on CARA. Now, streets. I don't think any of you were on the council when I helped promote a gas tax. There was a lot of discussion, some comments, well, if we have a gas tax and Corvallis doesn't, they'll drive to Corvallis. At that time, I presented documentation that the prices of gas in Corvallis was higher. I know that in the past, these streets have been brought up. I guess if anyone is to blame, I guess we could look at some of the past councils or counselors. Our former mayor was in for a long, long time, and these discussions happened. Our counselor, Olson, he was in for many, many years. The past council has passed the buck to you. Now, there's going to be future discussions, and so I hope I'm able to give insight of what I feel. And, but anyway, a couple of the counselors at that time mentioned to me, well, since they didn't pass a gas tax, I guess they don't want the streets repaired. We need them repaired, and I don't envy your position in making the decision where the money comes from. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much. Next on the sign-up sheet is Director Rattle.
Good evening. Just wanted to give a quick downtown update, and I do have an advanced copy of the December newsletter. So wanted to remind everybody or let people know that the Downtown Twice-Around Parade is this Sunday, December third. We're very excited, and there are usually thousands of people in attendance, and our beautiful tree has arrived and has been set into place. Ahead of that, on Friday, December first, is our first Friday, and it is a sweater party, ugly or not, your pick, and there will be prizes. There's also listed lots and lots of downtown businesses that you can shop small at all season long and support local owners. Our volunteer spotlight highlights Hannah Darling, who has been with our team for many years and has helped with so many things. There is almost a full page of events in December, so I suggest you pick up a copy or look online for a copy. Also want to share that our Downtown Unwrapped featured holiday windows. Appreciate Mayor Johnson for providing his Mayor's Choice Awards. The Public Choice Awards for The Public Choice Awards, first place went to the Natty Dresser, second place to the Squeaky Cork with a unique holiday design, and then third place was Emma Downtown. The Mayor's Choice was the Natty Dresser, Weather Together Market, and Red's Boutique. The annual Christmas Parlor Tour is set for Sunday, December 10. And there are also other events at the Monteith House, and lots of things going on at the Carousel. Understand that Santa, after being at the parade, will be spending quite a bit of time over at the Carousel to delight people throughout the season, so suggest that you do that. I'd also like to do a big shout out to the city team for putting up the snowflakes. You may have noticed how beautiful they are downtown, and also in the last two days, they've been decorating the community tree with the ornaments that come from the Downtown Association through some of our Main Street funding. Also, a big shout out to Albany Park and Recreation for going above and beyond and making it possible for us to have the Albany Trolley. It wasn't going to happen, and now it is. So I'd like to extend a public invitation to the city council to ride on the trolley in this Sunday's Downtown Twice Around Parade. So I hope everybody will join us, and I will see you then.
Thank you so much, Director. Next on the agenda is adoption of resolutions. Number 1A is sole source procurement of Motorola Solutions video receiver, server, and a body worn camera upgrades. Chief Harden will be speaking. Page 63 through 66 in your packet, there's a resolution on page 65.
Good evening again, hopefully I won't cough through this, so I won't get into the details. You have the memo request. We've been with Motorola, its predecessor was WatchGuard since our inception of the program. Is any technology these days, there's an end of life, and so we're at that end of life, and with it comes some upgrades, and, and we've seen those things creep up. This is an important tool for us for transparency reasons, for evidentiary reasons, and risk management. It's essential to how we do business and policing in Albany. So I'm requesting that we stick with our current vendor of Motorola, so asking for sole source consideration. It would be a huge lift in workload to our IT department if we were to make a change as well. A lot, there's a lot of integration between our current system, so I'm asking the council to consider sole source procurement for this particular vendor.
Anybody have questions for Chief? Counsel, have a motion?
Happy to. I would move the adoption of the resolution on page 65. For the city council acting as the local contract review board, waiving competitive bidding and awarding a sole source contract to Motorola Solutions for providing video server and body worn camera upgrades and subscription service, and authorizing the police chief to award and execute a contract with Motorola Solutions to procure video server and body worn camera upgrades.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, sole source procurement to remount two ambulances. Chris LaBelle? Is it Chief, Battalion Chief?
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief, okay.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I will keep this brief, but just wanted to highlight just a couple of things. So the request this evening is for approval, allowing our department to use sole source procurement for rebounding of two ambulances. If approved, we will use Hughes Fire Equipment out of Springfield to do the work, and they are the sole provider of Lifeline Emergency Vehicles in Oregon, which is the brand of the ambulances we currently have. The rebound process is basically removing the box portion or the patient compartment from the old chassis, they refurbish it and then put it on a new chassis, and it basically looks like a brand new ambulance when it comes back to us. If we are able to order chassis in December, which is our hope, if we get approval this evening, we still have about a year wait before they arrive just because of supply chain issues. So once we receive the new chassis in a year, it would then take about three months to transition the old box over to the new chassis. So we're probably 15 months out before we would have those new vehicles in service. The total cost of the project for both ambulances is just over $406,000, which we would use available funds from our ground emergency medical transport revenues. As a department, we've always really taken pride in being good financial stewards of city and department funds, and I think this is a project that is another opportunity to demonstrate that, and that we really are trying to get the most life out of our emergency vehicles, knowing how expensive they are. So be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, just a quick aside, if they, what would be a total cost of purchasing a brand new ambulance? Just to show the relationship.
Yeah, absolutely, and it was in the memo, but yeah, it's about $100,000 savings per vehicle doing the rebound process versus buying brand new.
So that includes testing and setup and all that stuff?
That's, that's total price, yes.
Total price, okay.
Just, just as an aside, I did read that, I just wanted to get it out.
Oh, no, appreciate that, thank you.
The public needs to know you're saving them money.
Absolutely, that's what we're trying to do always.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you're pointing out that, that we are being a good steward of taxpayers' money. So I really do appreciate this. It's a very creative way, too. I thought it was really neat, we heard about this previously, I think we voted on this, too. So it's, it's kind of cool.
Yes.
Comment? How many of these have you done? This has been going on for a long time.
It has, I don't have a specific number for you, but I do know that we could do this up to three times. So we could do a rebound, those boxes, the patient compartments are good for up to three times that we could do this, so.
So the chassis gets replaced and you drop the box back on?
Yep, exactly.
Is the box inspected and refurbished?
It is, it's totally, it looks brand new, they rewire, put lighting, lighting in it, repaint it, do everything, and they just put it on a new chassis. So when it comes back to us, you can't even tell that it's not a brand new ambulance.
Counsel?
Question?
Go ahead. I thought she hit her mic, go ahead, please.
How long does that, like how long would it last now that you're going to have the remodel?
So the ones that we're doing the rebound on now are 2016, 2017 units. So it really depends on the chassis itself, how many miles that we put on it. We obviously put a lot of miles on during COVID. I mean, we've seen an increase in calls for service, but we were taking transfers all over the state where there's hospital beds, so we did put a lot of mileage on our ambulances. So that, it's the chassis really to where we have to determine when we have to replace them. Does that answer your question? I, if, if the miles stay low, it's in a reserve status, it can last for years, but it really depends on wear and tear.
Thank you.
We go out to other communities, like I, I know we've done like some transports, like to Newport or to Bend even. How frequent is that, and is that in the calculation for how long our ambulances are going to last?
Yeah, and a lot of those transports, they have diminished since COVID. So we're, we're back to the normal transports to Eugene, Portland, obviously a lot to Corvallis. So it, it's infrequent that we take those really long transports, but really, as we continue to see an increase in calls for service in our own community, we'll, we'll continue to rack up miles on those ambulances. So we're always looking at forecasting for the future and how often that we do need to replace those ambulances, because we need to make sure they're tip top shape, especially when we're transporting critical patients.
Yeah, I've been in an ambulance a few times, a nice fun, long ambulance ride to Portland once. So, you know, I, I gave birth to both my babies like 12 weeks early, so. But yeah, so I appreciate the shocks are, are good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just saying.
We don't want anybody breaking down halfway to Portland. Yeah.
All right, thank you. I do appreciate the work. I did have a question for you. In the military, we have preventative maintenance, a PMS system that, you guys have the same similar?
We do, yeah, we have a battalion chief that oversees our entire fleet. He works with Hughes Fire Equipment, who also does our maintenance, and so annually, there's certain requirements, federal requirements, state requirements, to make sure that we keep all of our, our vehicles in, in good shape.
So they're inspected regularly, then, that's a good thing. All right, thank you, that clears up my questions. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution of the, approve the resolution, excuse me, of the city, Albany City Council acting as the local contract review board, waiving competitive bidding and awarding sole, oh, oh yeah, sole source contract to Hughes Fire Equipment, Inc. to remount two Lifeline ambulances, and authorizing the fire chief to execute a contract with Hughes Fire Equipment, Inc. not to exceed $406,682.
Sorry, I'll, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, motion is passed. Resolution is passed. Next on tonight's agenda is Award Number 7A, Award of Contracts. Award of Contract for Marketing and Tourism Promotion Services. Sophie Adams, our Economic Development Manager, page 70 and 71 of your packet. Resolution on page 71.
Okay, good evening. So as you know, the city regularly contracts with outside agencies to provide marketing and tourism promotion services. The previous contract ended in June and was extended, as you all know, to make sure that we didn't have a gap in services. As required for a contract of this size and type, we embarked on an RFP, or Request for Proposals process, leaning heavily on the expertise of the Tourism Advisory Committee to craft a scope of work and priorities for these services. That RFP closed on August 29, and as I noted in my memo, we received four qualified proposals. The proposals were evaluated by a committee comprised of staff from various departments here at the city, as well as two members of the Tourism Advisory Committee. I am pleased to say that the Albany Visitors Association received the highest score, and as such, received a notice of intent to award, and also worked with staff to negotiate a contract. So the question, or the request for you tonight is to adopt the resolution on page 71, awarding the contract to the Albany Visitors Association.
Any questions, Counsel?
Yeah, I was, I was curious what the other proposals were. Were those be public record? I'd love to see them as well.
Yeah, I believe that we can get you copies of those. They're all varied lengths, all qualified firms. All of them look a little different, but all of them did meet the qualifications laid out in the RFP.
Okay, excellent, yeah, I just would like to see them.
Sure, thanks.
Yeah, make sure all of us get it, please.
I'll double check with our procurement officer first, just to make sure I'm allowed.
Yeah, as long as it's legal, we can do that, yeah. Any other councils have any questions?
I move, Counsel, approve a resolution awarding a contract to Albany Visitors Association, AVA, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the AVA for $681,885 for marketing and tourism promotion services.
Second.
That was a, wow, okay, so we have seven seconds. So who, who'd you get first? The second, who'd you get first?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to sort it out, I think for one.
I think it was either one of, I was over here, I know that.
The two of us tied, I think, Vermesia and I said at the same time.
Counselor Novak, I was, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Novak is honored to second that.
Okay, thank you very much, Counsel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, Manager Sophie.
Thank you.
Adams. Congratulations to the AVA. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Counsel?
I move we adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Thank you very much, Counsel. Staff reports, item nine on your agenda, allowing pets, swine slash pigs in the city of Albany. Christian Dell, Cold Compliance Officer, Christian Dell. Pages 94 in your packet.
Good evening, Counsel. I don't have really a bunch of statements. I assume you read the memo. I'm here just to answer any questions you may have regarding this research.
Counsel?
I just want to thank you for doing that research. I appreciate you looking into it for us and laying it out so clearly. Appreciate it.
And then any recommendations on what you'd like to do going forward? Counsel?
Basically, if we do nothing, it stays, stays as the ground rules are currently, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
I would like to continue doing what we're doing.
Okay, this is the easiest I've ever had conversing with you guys.
I, I, it appears to me that the action is no action.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Item number nine, Bravo, is Lehigh Park Service Materials, Director Kim LaDain. Is she online or is she here? Oh, she's at home, she's at the house, that's good.
Is everyone sick?
I know, she's got a.
I think every single person's sick right now.
No, not me, I'm not sick.
Everyone that's spoken to go home and watch Gilded Age and like drink tea.
I am very fine, thank you.
I cannot get sick this time of year, so.
Did everyone read the article I sent as well, the scientific article, research fact?
Yes.
All right, let me share really quick. Thank you for your patience. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to come back, and thank you for this interesting discussion, as it has allowed me to learn a whole lot more about playground surfacing. So as a reminder, I came back last week, not last week, last month, to talk about our sensory playground, as we heard feedback from the community that our traditional manufactured engineered wood fiber is not going to work for, for our folks. And so we went back and we worked with the, the product, the folks that we use when we put together our playgrounds, and we decided we were going to move forward with the Forever Lawn product, but the question came up about microplastics, and so I kind of wanted to revisit about what I've learned. So, just as a little bit of information, Lehigh, our surfacing area, the play area is a little over 4,500 square feet. I am terrible with spatial reasoning, and so I needed to look that up to figure out how big a small soccer field was, because to me, that helps me wrap my brain around it. A traditional small, you know, high school soccer field is about almost 50,000 square feet. So our options that we can potentially move forward with on this product, or on this project, would be synthetic turf, like the one that's coming through right now, pour in place rubber, which I'll talk about it in a little bit, rubber tiles, and engineered wood fiber. So the Forever Lawn product, Forever Lawn Playground Grass is specifically the, the product. The reason why we intended to use it and why we proposed using it is that we felt it was an ideal element for the, for a sensory playground. It's ADA accessible, it's anti-static, which is a good thing for two reasons. One, if kiddos are coming down a slide, electricity, you know, is, is collected, and as you all may, maybe remember, you get shocked, which is not a pleasant experience for anybody, but if you have sensory issues, it can definitely be overwhelming. Or if you're somebody who uses a electronic medical device, like a cochlear implant, it can actually wipe your programming. Part of this, the green little vial that you have in there, the, that is actually sand. I'll talk more about in a second, but it's antimicrobial, so it's sprayed with something, so it's resistant to mold, mildew, any accidents that potentially would take place on a playground, as well as any other like pathogens, it is, helps to make it be a safe space moving forward. It's cool in temperatures, it doesn't necessarily trap heat, so if anybody's been out to Lehigh, we do have some really beautiful tree cover there, but it is still going to be in the sun. So any type of, if it can get cooler quicker, we're happy about that. If you rub your hands on it, it's a sensory-rich tactile experience. So for some kids potentially who are on the spectrum or not, coming out to the park, we thought if you just sat in there and rubbed your hands around, that could potentially be a highlight for some folks. Maintenance wise, it's about once or twice a year, we'll have to go out, our staff and rake, and pour some additional infill in there. If repairs happen, we're able to do them in-house instead of going back out through a contractor. And what we came through on our last, when we came through with the memo and our resolution, it was to authorize us to spend, well, a total amount, but $136,000, almost 134, would be for the surfacing. So it is not a cheap product. So environmental impact, and so I'm really glad as I got to learn a whole bunch about this. So if you think about synthetic turf, or the ones that you've potentially seen at high schools, you know, sports complexes, if you think of that rubber infill. I know I've played on it before, when you walk on it or bounce a ball, it kind of like puffs up. And a lot of times that rubber infill is what there are concerns about, as that can get washed away. Anytime it's moving all around, it can get taken out into parking lots and whatnot. This system that we are, that we have originally proposed, does not use rubber infill. Use this, the, the green stuff that was in the vial, which is a silica sand out of Texas. So it's all. all natural, it's sprayed with the antimicrobial microban. The rubber infill, it can be up to 10 pounds per square foot, which is crazy for my brain to think about, in order to help with like the impact. The sand product is a little under 2 pounds per square foot, so there's less of it, but it helps to absorb. The items that I passed around is a sample of the infill product.
That would go inside the green turf?
Yep. And that staff will go out once or twice a year and fluff and refill on areas that are getting hit harder underneath swings and at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the slide. Thank you. You're welcome. So, and then, as you can see, the grass, they've come up with, the material that's underneath of that is actually recycled plastics from the Yellowstone Project, so it's recycled materials, and they take a lot of pride in the fact that like you can really yank at it and it's not going to come out. So, unless it is cut or burned, they've promised that it's guaranteed for the life of the product, which is about 15-year lifespan. So, so, yes, uses soybean products, recycled plastics, the padding underneath of it, this is a one-inch, our contract, we are hoping to do two inches, as that'll help it, you know, with shock absorption and all that kind of good stuff. But I got to go to a conference and meet with them, and I said, "Give me your samples. I want to take this back. I want to feel it." So, I figured it would be helpful. Alternative options. So, we do have, we're not recommending this, but we could go back to engineered wood fiber. As you can see, it is far more affordable. It's $25,000, and we spend about $1,000 per playground every year, coming back and doing infill and adding additional materials. But it's not ADA accessible, and we heard very much from the community that it is not what they want for a sensory playground, so I would not recommend that one. Pour-in-place was something that was brought up. Pour-in-place is going to be going in down at the waterfront project. It is beautiful, it is, designs are able to be worked in there very well. It's about two or three inches of recycled rubber. You can see at the bottom, that's compressed rubber, and then there is what they call like virgin rubber on top that is pieced together with an epoxy. So, there isn't necessarily, when I've chatted with the product manufacturers, there's no perfect product environmentally in their minds because it's either potentially the chemicals that are binding everything together and/or, or, yeah, there's just no necessarily perfect product. It's put together with a polyurethane binder. Some of the things that make us a little less, a little more cautious about using pour-and-play is that if it is damaged, we cannot fix it in-house. We'd have to call a contractor back out to do that. And depending on temperature and whatnot, it has to be set and mixed in a very specific timeframe. So, that potentially provides some limitations. It does have a sensory feel to it, like it is rougher, but it's not kind of the same like grass experience. It does, it's not tremendously more expensive, it's 150, so it's about $14,000 difference if we were to do the installation at Lehigh.
But that doesn't also, does not include any maintenance or any repairs or anything like that?
I mean, neither one of them necessarily do. One's able to be done in-house, but if anything were to happen, we'd have to call out. And that's a likelihood that we'll have to move forward with, kind of regardless with moving forward. So, I am here to hopefully answer any additional questions, as well as look for some direction so that I can hopefully place an order soon, because it takes about three months for products to even think coming in. So, I open it up for questions.
Council questions for the Director?
Yes.
I noticed on your staff report that your recommendation is to revise the lease option contract to have one three-year renewal period. Does that reflect...
You get to see me twice, so that'll be the next one talking about for the Cumberland.
So, I have a few questions.
He had a question?
It was for the next topic.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I believe Ms. Novak actually did before I did. Thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering, and forgive me if I missed it in the information we've been given, but this sensory grass, this would not leach any sort of plastics into the water?
It does, it's, it does not have a chemical compound that is being mixed on-site to set it, so it is manufactured in a plant. So, I guarantee you there's polyurethane and, you know, additional plastic, I know there's plastic in there, but it's not necessarily something that would be mixed on-site and applied on-site.
I understand what you're saying, I believe, but, so it's not mixed on-site and applied on-site. My question is, if we were to move to use this product, would this product with rain and feet and all people playing on it, would it in any way leach plastics into our water?
Not that I am aware.
Good. Thank you.
So, in the, in the study that I share with the rest of the council, so there is, there is scientific backing that artificial turf can, you know, degrade, you know, and with, you know, with feet, with heat, with water, into small pieces of microplastic, which do get into our water and soil. In addition, there are large, bacteria can hide within the blades of grass. And I believe with the Forever Lawn, I looked at the product, they do use PFAS, which are actually outlawed in Boston and several cities in California because they're with, made with a forever chemical compound that is just not, not good to use, especially when you think about kids rubbing their hands on it.
I guess, to that point, doesn't, wouldn't any of them degrade over time and get potentially washed into the gutters?
Sophie, yes, great. If you, so if you read the study I sent over, because of the blades of each of these pieces of grass are so much smaller and have a lower surface area than a large flat piece of, you know, that the pour-in-place we use as an example, if we had to choose one, it wouldn't degrade at the same rate because there is, I wish I had, I should pull it up right in front of me. Yeah, it's like the surface area, it's like the way that it's structured. That's, that's a big, a huge concern for me. I just feel like we shouldn't bring that into our community.
Sure, and that's something that we can certainly, if council wishes, we can choose a different product. On our hand, I've, I've chatted with quite, with manufacturers who sell both products. They stand to make more money selling the pour-and-play, and they're selling more of the Forever Lawn because of how it's, how it maintains and drought-resistant, and it's just... It's a product that seemed to meet our needs here currently a little bit better.
I have a question. Have you talked to any other communities that has used this product that is, have the same sort of demographics we have here?
Sure, so I, it's used all over. Here in town, we would be the second playground, the YMCA, their accessible playground has put it in a couple months ago now. I think it opened at the end of, end of summer, I believe. So, this would only be the second one potentially here in town. And if we did pour-and-play, it would be the first slash second, depending on when the playground opens up compared to the waterfront.
I have another question. The little antimicrobial, what impact does this have on the breakdown of things and maybe keeping the plastics out of, does this, what does this do?
So, that's your shock absorption. So...
Oh, shock, okay, thank you.
So, that way, if a kid falls and they hit their head...
Right, I understand.
It cushions the impact. So, instead of it being the infill rubber, which I do know that there are a lot of places that have issues with the rubber, and there are certain areas in California that that is not used, from what I understand and from what I've researched, the Envirofill, which is the sand, is a preferred method.
Is a what? I'm sorry?
Is a preferred product if you don't physically need to use the rubber infill for, for sports needs.
Thank you. I guess I was asking because of the antimicrobial component, so... Pretty much answered my question, I guess.
Counselor Smith has a commoner question?
My question is, what do we know about the other recreational surfaces that have been installed in Albany in the last five years in considerable volume? The soccer fields that the YMCA put in, the new fields that the school district put in as part of their remodeling projects, and there's a lot of new ground, old ground covered by new surfaces. And did anybody ask these questions when that was done? Do, when the kids, those are not adults playing soccer on the Y fields. I see them all the time. And do, when they hit the ground or kick the ground or while, oh, go run over the surface of the fields, do the little, little black plastic things fly up like they do in college football? Or when the NBA or NFL is playing? I don't know, but I, I just wanted to know if anybody was, had raised these concerns about the effect of all this new green surface on Albany's environment. I didn't remember hearing it from anyone.
So, I refereed football for 25 years. I've been on the worst football fields in the state, and I've been on some of the best football fields in the state. I know that when they put these fields in, there's considerable bed of sand and gravel before it touches even the soil or any actual dirt. And so, there is a filtration process where the water is designed to run off and not to the sewers. So, I'm hoping that we can make a decision to move forward with this because the kids in the city need this. I like the antimicrobial feature of this grass, and, and it won't last forever if it's treated properly, and I don't see it being used as much as West Albany's football field, because I went many nights home with black beads all in my shoes and my socks, my hair, my clothes, because they do kick up. But this is not going to be used the same way.
All due respect, Mayor, that's not scientifically backed, saying that, that you, they have the filtration, like all, all, everything leaves downstream, everything goes to water. It's not all naturally, you know...
I didn't say it was naturally filtered, I said it was filtered by the process of what is put down.
There's still going to be the microplastics or the things that are, and a forever chemical that cannot go away, PFAS, that we'll be stuck with, we're putting in our community. And yeah, there are other organizations that are not the, the city of Albany, that we're, we are elected in here to do what's best for our community. We aren't the YMCA, we aren't, you know, we don't have their, we aren't in charge of their organizations, but we're in charge of, of public access for free parks for our community. What's, what's the best health-wise for our community? And that, that's just, I have major concerns.
Comment? I like the idea, well, I'm proud of us for designing a park that is specifically aimed to meet the needs of our residents who haven't had those needs met before in a public park and playground setting. And I would move to accept the recommendation to use Forever Lawn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No. I feel really mixed about it. I, I share concerns about the PFAS, I really do. I, I see Counselor Newton's point about the fact that we're the city of Albany and we're, I, I understand that, so I think, I, I may just ask too, well, if I abstain, that's a yes, right? I, I don't understand that setup either, how if you abstain, you're assenting? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Counselor?
Yeah?
If you'll excuse me, you need to declare, declare extension ahead of the vote, yeah. Sorry.
Okay, so I can't bow out gracefully, I can't bow out at all. Oh. May I ask another question? We haven't totally closed this discussion. If we used real grass, that's not...
This is out of the, out of the parliamentary procedure. Actually, the comments and the questions have to happen before the vote's taken.
All right, I, it's, we're voted out anyway, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against it only because of the PFAS. I, I, I'm, I...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody vote? Can you do a roll call, please?
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Counselor Novak?
No.
Counselor Newton?
No.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Monague?
Yes.
Count, uh, sorry, it's four to two.
Thank you very much, Council, for the discussion. I thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is the lease sale of property, Pine Street to Cumberland Community Event Center, Director LaDain, pages 95 and 96 of your packet.
All right, well, welcome back. I am revisiting from the presentation that Emma and Joel from the Cumberland Community Event Center, I believe they were here on the 9th of October. They came and told everybody a little bit about their updates as to everything that they have been doing, as well as they asked Council to consider three potential options, which would, to sell the remaining three lots at Pine Street. They've purchased one two years ago. There are three other lots in order for their full project to take place. So, they proposed to sell the lots at a nominal price, they suggested $36. Revise the lease option contract with a reduced purchase price. Currently, it's $207,000 for the three parcels of land together, and a one-three-year renewal period instead of coming back annually. Or revise the, I guess the least of the options, is revise the lease option contract to have one three-year renewal period. Council, you all asked for staff to come back and kind of let you know what some of our, what the impacts of that would be, and so that's why I'm here tonight. So, back in 2020, when we were working with the Cumberland and selling the property and coming together with the purchase/lease agreement, we used the 2018 Lynn County tax assessments to assign real market value to the land. We also at that time went out and I worked with a real estate agent to give us the fair market value. Fair market value was far higher than the assessed tax value on the, on the lot, on the lots. So, because Council was, is and was supportive of working with the Cumberland, instead of charging fair market value, we said, "All right, it'll be $207,000 for the remaining parcels." With that said, if you revisit now and pull up the 2023 Lynn County tax assessments, those three same lots have, have been valued at $196,000. So, it has gone down a little bit. So, moving forward, that's the information that I'm kind of working with. I didn't go back out and work with a real estate agent, as I didn't expect you all to want us to go back and sell real market value now when we didn't three years later, so I hope that's okay. So, in thinking about what that means, if we went with one of the three options that the Cumberland Community Event Center poised, selling the lots at a nominal price, so while our department has no current use or plans to use that property, we are supportive of the Cumberland Community Event Center. $200,000 goes a fairly significant way in our multimillion-dollar backlog, specifically at Eleanor Hackelman and the Albany Skate Park, which are right there, a major part of that, that block. We have more than $200,000 worth of repairs that are needed there alone between the pickleball courts, and the skate park has been estimated at $1 million needing of improvements, sidewalks, the restroom, like we have a lot in our backlog. And so, while if we were to sell these properties to the Cumberland now or five years from now, the money that we would generate from that would be directly invested back into those two properties. We wouldn't use it anyplace else because we want to help the neighborhood, we want to be a collaborative part of that. So, while $207,000 won't necessarily tackle all of those projects or most of them on the list, it is still $200,000 that we do not have elsewhere, and that if we don't have that money, then it'll just, those remaining projects will be addressed as budget and priorities aligned. So, in regards to revising the lease option contract with the reduced purchase price, one possible thing that Council could do is say, "We can look at our tax records right now, and you can, you know, get it for a little less than $200,000 instead of 207." I mean, that would kind of stay in line with what was proposed a couple years ago. Or if Council has another price that you would potentially be interested in, that is not necessarily $36, that could also definitely be, I mean, it's up to you all, it could be entertained, but just kind of knowing what that impact would be. And as, as far as the revising the lease option contracts to one three-year instead of having to come back every year, that is absolutely fine. If Council wants to go 10-year lease contract, that is fine with us. We understand that the Cumberland needs to be able to show ownership in order for financing and additional fundraising support, 100%. So, an extended lease isn't something that we are against at all. I'm just kind of looking for, if you're interested in moving forward and selling the properties at a different value or at a reduced value, then please let me know, as I'll need to go back, and we'll have to do public hearings and postings and all of that kind of to move forward on that process. So, at the... So at this point, I'm hopefully going to get some direction on what you all would like to do or if you need some more time to think about it.
Counselor Novak was first.
Thank you. Um, I just want to remind Counsel that with regard to Hackelman Park and the mess that those courts are in, we had a group of private citizens who play pickleball, who, um, wanted and, uh, created their own fund with donations from players who wanted to see those courts repaired. And I don't think necessarily that repairing those courts is something that has to come out of the city's budget because you had individuals ready, willing and able to, to, it could have been repaired by now. We, they had people in, I know you're shaking your head at me, sir, but, um, and maybe I just don't understand the workings of government entirely because I'll be honest with you, I don't. Some things just flummox me and that was one of them. At any rate, I do think that it's possible that the repair of Hackelman Courts doesn't necessarily have to come out of the city's budget or Parks and Rec's budget unless, again, it's just the way things have to be done. Because when, I just, I don't understand when concerned citizens are willing to take action and provide funding themselves, why we, why we can't work with them.
And we have followed up on that and so we've reached out, we've obtained, you know, we're working with the contractor, specifically the one that got the bid, providing the information to make sure that it meets all of our city obligations for purchasing and procurement. The weather's changed. Even if we had done it at that same moment, if we had been able to go through it, I'd still don't know if it would have been able to be poured by the time, by right now. But I know it is something that I've continued to chat with the grassroots group that is interested.
I'm glad you are. That's good to hear.
They have indicated that they potentially are still interested in the spring or they might wait for, um, when the city is able to fund it.
Thank you.
Problem?
So did you have any guidance on the other part of the discussion?
Well, I, I do support the Cumberland and I would like to see us, you know, help them with the decision that we make here. I'm just saying it, as much as we need money in the coffers, and I agree that we can always use more money in the coffers. I don't know necessarily $36 per, per lot, but I'm not opposed to doing whatever really helps those folks with the plans that they have. I've read the letters that you all saw today as well. And I, I just want to say publicly that I do support them and I hope that we can, um, take an action that will help them and expedite what it is they want to do.
Thank you. Any other Counsel have a comments? Counselor Novak? Excuse me. Counselor Kupczynski and then Counselor McGee?
Yes, I, I definitely approve, uh, like the idea of doing it to a, a three-year purchase price. And I would say peg it to the reduced assessed value. Uh, and I think Marilyn might be able to, uh, answer this question better than I can. I seem to recall that there was something in the original agreement with Hackelman property that it had to stay a city park, or am I missing?
So we wouldn't be changing the Hackelman property. This one, we have done our due diligence to make sure that those four lots would be able to be sold to, um, to the Cumberland Community Event Center. Hackelman, we wouldn't. We're keeping it.
Just that one small portion. Okay, so I'm, I'm all good with that then. So yeah, I can, that's my recommendation.
Counselor McGee? You have any, okay, I thought you did.
I just have a comment. Something's just rubbing me the wrong way when we're looking at, um, wanting to charge a nonprofit who's been working towards really revitalizing that area of town and really bringing up that, with, with this community center. Um, it's going to offer, you know, cooking classes. You guys all wrote the letters in affirmation. Um, and then when, when, uh, we sold the property downtown over on Second to Mr. Leppman for, you know, the, the entire, entire lot, a, a smoking deal, he got, we only, we were only selling half of, half the, half the, the quarter block, he got the whole half block for the one purchase price. So something's just rubbing me the wrong way with, um, how we're, uh, how we're, how we're picking and choosing who we're, uh, you know, giving a good deal to.
Counselor Smith?
Um, the difference between the Leppman sale and the sale of this property is that this will be a non, this will belong to a nonprofit and it will not be on the tax rolls as it is not now. So we're not, we're gonna be, we will, we will benefit from selling the property to Mr. Leppman with the development that occurs on that. We're going to get tax money out of that in, in large chunks. I agree with Counselor Kupczynski about the three-year lease and I would, um, also support the reduction in price to the current assessed value. I do, I, I do believe that, um, it should be sold and not given away.
So I'm of mindset of having a revenue generating resource downtown is going to be there between 25 and 50 years, bringing jobs, revitalizing our downtown is different than a park that's not been used for over 25 years or 40 years. So it's a different animal. And I'm also the one that made the recommendation, the motion to sell the church then for a silver dollar, which we have hanging on the wall in there. I don't think giving the land is, I don't think giving the land is the best way to go, giving it away. It should be, in my estimation, be at the reduced value and I support the three-year lease.
I also, uh, think that we can, uh, extend their lease and, um, give them the reduced tax value. I think that's a, a nice savings for them. And I, I agree with you, you know, this money can go to, maybe it's not the pickle courts, but there are a lot of things you can do with that money. You guys are really great at stretching those dollars. So I, I'm excited to see what we can eventually do with that, so.
So Counsel, do we have, um, do we need a motion? Do we need a motion? I think we do.
Well, I think you don't necessarily need a motion at this point. I think we've got the direction from you and, and which, which way you'd like to move. There's some other steps that have to be taken before that can happen anyway. We've got to go back and come back to you again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Director. Great report.
Thank you very much for your help.
Next on tonight's agenda is a personnel change request from Library Director Eric Ikenoy. Is he here with us this evening? Oh, he's there. Hey, how you doing? Happy New Year. I haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening. So I just have, if you read the memo, uh, we're doing a little more creative staffing solutions with, uh, we filled the, a library in one position with an existing staff member who was a library aide. Uh, we, instead of just refilling the library aide position, we're splitting those hours. Uh, we're bumping, uh, two library assistants up in hours and bumping a current library aide to a library assistant. That's a little more, um, representative of the work that they've been doing. And then we will have enough for about a 24-hour, uh, library assistant position to fill.
Counsel, any questions?
Another example of paying people for what they're doing. It makes sense to me.
Have a motion?
Um, yeah, I'll move that we, um, approve the personnel change request in the library. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Eric, do you know when the, um, children's area of the main library will be opening up again?
Yes, thank you for asking. We are close. Um, this week we'll be finishing up. Uh, building maintenance has been on site. Uh, today they, uh, put in, see, replaced the ceiling tiles, uh, that were damaged. So, um, they have repaired, um, a couple of their other features. Um, the, it's clean. The main thing we're waiting for now is on Sunday, we'll have an HVAC cleaning, uh, on Sunday. Then after that, the, uh, ServPro will come back on Monday to do the final carpet cleaning. Um, and hopefully we'll get everything put back on the shelves in relatively decent order. Um, so fingers crossed everything goes well. We're hoping by the end of next week we'll be open. I, I don't want to, I don't want to put a firm date on it because there's a lot of, you know, variables there, but it, it's coming along.
And the Maker Space will still be there and?
Maker Space will still be there and for about 45 minutes, it'll be the cleanest children's apartment in the entire state of Oregon. And then, um, yeah, you know, it's, it's, uh, uh, the, everything will be there. Um, yeah, we're excited, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
My daughter was very concerned, uh, when I told her about the fire and she said, I hope all the puppets made it out safely.
The puppets made it out? I believe some, uh, yes, were working on those.
Yeah, I don't know.
Will you have any kind of a ribbon cutting for all the kids to come in too?
Uh, no, we're probably, we're gonna kind of ease into it.
Kids aren't into rib, ribbon cuttings unless I'm wrong.
Actually, I watched Noah Salazar cut ribbon in the park.
Kids would love, yes.
So thank you very much, Director. Congratulations and let your staff know we're, we're happy to do this for them. Uh, next on the agenda is Counsel Agenda and, um, I'll have Counselor Kupczynski go first.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing tonight. Oh, then we'll go over to Counselor McGee, uh, Montague.
Well, I just, uh, hope the public joins us for the twice around, uh, Christmas parade. I, uh, was in it last year. I was privileged to be able to ride the trolley last year and it was a blast and the kids just lose their mind over Santa and I think it is so much fun. So please join us.
Thank you. And I'll go Ward One next, Counselor Novak. I looked at you. Look, Counselor Novak.
You do that a lot. It's okay. It's kind of endearing. Yeah. Um, yeah, I apologize for being a few minutes late yet again this evening. I used to just walk across the street from the back door of my restaurant and now I have to come from North Albany. And I will say, I don't know what we can do about this, but it doesn't seem to matter if it's shortly before four o'clock in the afternoon or shortly before six o'clock in the evening, traffic from North Albany, North Albany Road, Highway 20, over the bridge, is jammed. On a Wednesday night, a Monday night, it doesn't even matter what night of the week it is. I use, it used to be, you know, if there was a ball game in Corvallis on a Saturday, you could count on that. Now it doesn't matter what time of day almost or what day of the week it is, what, I'm like, what can we do? That's something that my father was really concerned about back in the day. And, um, I think that that might be a topic for future discussion because it is a mess. It's an absolute mess and I don't know how it is that it can be so bad. I mean, I know we have a lot of growth, but that's the sort of thing you're supposed to plan for with roads. I don't know. Anyway, that's all I want to say is it, I'm going to learn to leave a lot sooner, but it really stinks that it should take that long to get from North Albany to a council meeting. It shouldn't take me half an hour. It just shouldn't.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that we did approve a traffic study to be done on that exact part of road to look at, uh, ways that we can improve the traffic flow. So that is being addressed.
It's in the works. Thanks for the reminder.
We are addressing that.
We, well.
Counselor Newton?
Yeah, I had a, a great week, but I had a request. Um, I talked to you about this, Mayor, and also to, uh, our city manager. Our next meeting is during Hanukkah and I was wondering, so that's, uh, will be both, uh, December 4th and 6th. And I was wondering if it would be amendable for everyone on council if we met earlier in the day so I could be home to light candles and, you know, attempt to defeat my daughter at dreidel and make latkes and all the other fun stuff. So was the thing I wanted to bring up.
Counselor Smith? And the next meetings are on the 11th and the 13th, which I believe are also during Hanukkah.
Yes. I got my numbers wrong. I was looking at my calendar, but yes.
Well, sundown, right? So what time would you like to?
Sundown's usually 4:30 unfortunately. It's really depressing. Um, but yeah, just even if, you know, we usually aren't right at 4:30 just because, you know, kids. But if I was home by like 5:30, that'd be great.
Girl, you could leave early or not come. We will, we'll, we understand if you can't make, you have something.
Well, if you leave earlier, that'd be great too.
Well, I think people expect us to be here.
Yes, okay.
Because it's already like established, but if you need to leave early or you need to take care of your business, I don't think that would be a problem. You, obviously we'll have an excuse. I mean, I just plan for six, uh, because that's what's in my calendar and that's how it's been running and I really can't be making a lot of adjustments at the time, just toward the end of the terms. It's a lot.
I understand that. I'm willing to change things up, but I understand with what you do for a living, that you can't change it up if you can't. So, but I, I would be willing if, if the others.
I'm not.
No? Okay.
My, my business is, 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM every night or 5:30 exactly when I come here.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I have a list. It's short. Um, and Counselor Montague took care of the first one. Uh, the second one is I wanted to acknowledge the untimely and unexpected death of Annie McDonald from Halsey, who has been for many years the Housing Services Manager for Albany Partnership for Housing and Community Development. Annie, uh, Albany, for those who aren't familiar with that organization, it's a nonprofit and can help me fill in some gaps. Anne is on the board of that organization, has been for a long time. And that's probably the, the oldest part of the foundation of truly affordable housing in Albany. They have 133 housing units, um, designed for people who cannot afford to live elsewhere and they have been very successful at that. Annie was a big part of that. Um, I have known Annie since 2007 or eight, uh, when she joined the board of the Homeless Engagement and Resource Team and was a consistent member of that throughout the, the many years that we've been together. We will be honoring her at the homeless memorial service that we're doing on the shortest night of the year, December 21st, 5:30 at Second Chance Shelter. Her memorial service is that morning in Halsey. Now, moving on, um, the last of the three leaf pickup weeks for the town that likes to cut down trees, sorry, editorial comment, there are lots of leaves on Albany's streets and they, when you only pick them up, uh, for a couple of weeks a year, they stay there for a long time. The last pickup session starts December 4th, ends December 15th. Get your leaves out, get them picked up. And in the meantime, don't forget that you can put those suckers in your yard debris cart any day of the week, all year long, and it makes a big difference. When it's dry, get them before it starts to rain this week because you can pack in tons of leaves in those giant carts. I have neighbors, have had neighbors for years who put them out on the street year round and expect them to get picked up and they don't. They just go around and they clog up storm drains. So please, um, love your streets and pick up your leaves. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor.
Quick note on that, filling up your yard cart with, uh, leaves, uh, when they're soaking wet and everything else, sometimes the Republic comes around and empties your yard cart. It only empties out about half of the yard cart.
Yeah, and pack them in as well, actually. Counselor McGee?
Just one thing, I had a constituent reach out regarding detox centers here. Um, there's not one in Lynn County, but I received the email that all of us got. And so she was putting together or thinking of putting together a task force of some sort, but I think she'll be coming to a, a meeting soon and talk about her vision or what she thinks or wants for something like that. That's the only thing I have.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that. I did read that. So that's great. I think it's a good idea. I do. So, um, Matthew Harrington, I want to recognize him because I'm already getting calls about the If I Were Mayor contest and the first school that called me is Noah Salazar School and they said, we'd like you to come and talk to about us about the program. And then more emails are coming in. So I'll be getting those dates to you, Matt. Thank you. Uh, Twice Around Downtown Parade was a blast last year. Uh, several people have offered to drive me to parade and one of them's sitting over here, so I gotta talk to him. Uh, but it, it was pretty exciting and I had a great time with Connor. So I'm looking forward to seeing everybody that night. And Counselor Newton stole my thunder in our library status update, so thank you for doing that. And I was invited by Judge McQuaddish to attend Family Treatment Court and I've been in Albany 29 years and I'd never experienced that. It was very, uh, interesting to see the families that are going through Family Treatment Court. And I do appreciate some of the young folks, the people that are going through recovery and their, and their, and their struggles, willing to come and kind of share what they're going through, how they've made improvements and how the judge recognized them for taking how they've made improvements, and how the judge recognized them for taking responsibility and being better parents and better family members, and it was just... And then she shocked me and asked me to speak, so it kind of threw me out of whack for a little bit. But if you haven't experienced it, I recommend spending a session with Family Treatment Court. There's a lot of great work going across the street. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors may recall that we've been planning on administering or having administered the National Community Survey late this year. But that survey is administered by Polco, a polling company. We last had a community survey in 2020, and today, the postcards went out that announced that survey to 3,000 randomly selected households in each of the three wards of the city. The way that will work is that the households that receive those postcards will be invited to respond to the survey, and then in January, we'll put out another, the same version, but it will go to anybody who wants to fill it out. And if you recall from any statistics you might have taken, the reason for that is that the first one, the randomly selected sample, is statistically valid. But we want to get input from everybody that we can, so we'll follow up with a distribution to the whole city. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next meeting dates are Monday, December 11th, at 2023 at 4:00 PM for a work session, and Wednesday, December 13th, 6:00 PM for a meeting, city council meeting. I adjourn.